Now we are. Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to members of council and members of staff and this live on Facebook. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any decorations of community area interest or the general nature thereof? Okay, seeing none, motion to accept the agenda.
That the committee members accept the agenda of the committee of the whole on Wednesday, May 19, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? You know, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Delegations, we have Barry Bryant and Associates Glengarry Sports Palace Engineering Services presented by Nick and Jennifer. Welcome.
Well, thank you, everyone. Sorry, I just had to find the unmute button. This Teams and Zoom platform thing gets to you some days. Appreciate everyone from the town invited us to talk about the recent progress and the project at the Glengarry North Sports Palace. If you have some time, I have about a short slide presentation that I just want to go to of basically what the project is, where it's at, and where we're going to next steps, if that's okay. Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So just a quick overview here. And we're going to talk about the introductions, project scope, a little bit about accessibility and universal design, a quick design review and progress of where we're at with the projects, and then next steps in schedule. So just a quick introduction on our firm. We were established in 1985. Our founding partner, Denny Bryan, it's still a partner today, although he'll be recently retiring in the next year. Collectively, we have about 40 staff members currently through the expertise of engineering, mainly structural, project management, and architecture. Collectively, we've designed, renovated, and reconstructed over 100 community recreation and specifically ice surfaces in Ontario in our past 35 years. More importantly, we've probably been involved in about over 60 rink slab replacements, as that's the main key component of this project. So regards to the project scope in 2020, Glengarry North was successful in obtaining funding through Infrastructure Canada under the ICIP to the Culture and Recreation Stream intake from their 2019 application, in which we were actually part of some other applications from other communities that were unsuccessful. So congratulations to your community in being successful. It's a big milestone because not a lot of communities did get awarded funding. With the funding, we'll provide a direct set of accessible functional required design alterations to the sports palace so that it can continue to provide safe, accessible, and inclusive, keyword inclusive, recreation and leisure active services to the local community, periphery, and visitors. And these are just some of the requirements that came out of the, what the initial scope of the grant was and setting up our project scope. So we were awarded the RFP in, I believe it was late February, early March 2020 this year. I believe after you were notified that you would be getting the funding to proceed. At that time, we met on site after review of the RFP and decided that the areas of focus for the design alterations, putting in brackets interior and exterior to include the main component being the arena rink slab and dashboard replacement. That's a very large component. Electrical mechanical systems and life safety systems applicable. The dressing room areas as well, and I put in accessibility and modernization. I don't know if some of you have been in there lately. The seating areas, so the possibility accessible lift and accessible seating in an area of the arena. Washrooms on the ground floor and washrooms on the second floor. And then other areas are the exterior areas of cladding and some possible exterior insulation. You know, it's great to have facilities, but you know, it's always nice and you don't get many opportunities to update them. So it's really about taking this grant to the max and, you know, presenting what the skin can look like as opposed to just renovating the interiors and as well as the possibility of renovating the main entrance area. So as a diagram for the ground floor, I'll just go through some of the major highlights. As you know, the arena rink slab in the red, just beside it, we have the new accessible lift to the seating areas that'll come off the ground floor once in the rink area and get you up to that first tier of seating. As we moved over to the right in the blue, we're going to renovate the two sets of washrooms. Reorganize that area a bit to become a little more functional and accessible, providing new modern barrier free stalls as well, and also the addition of taking some area of the existing canteen and providing a modern universal washroom on the ground floor for the arena. And highlighted in green, made an area entry alterations, which is still a little bit in flux, and I'll talk about that later. Skate sharpener relocate to more of a public area that becomes more accessible to users and patrons. And then the blue area in regards to the referee room alteration, so making that an accessible room with a proper shower and whatnot. And then we have dressing rooms one to four. So we've reorganized these to have accessible facilities in all four dressing rooms, showers, and water closets. And then they, an alteration at the end, we sort of moved the mechanical into a mechanical closet room before the last dressing room and reorganized the last change room, which was the Glenn's change room, and created that also to be accessible and created a new potential west arena access off that end. So the current access comes off here and breaking that bleacher slab and having the ability to enter the arena from the west end as well. The, the upper floor, again, discussing in the light blue, the new lift would get you to that tiered level of seating, the first tier, and then we create that first level as an accessible area of seating immediate to the lift. New bench seating throughout the facility. And then in the community hall area of the second floor, a reorganization of the men's and women's washrooms over here, and then also in capturing the current storage area and thinking of putting a universal washroom on the second floor as well because there is elevator access. So technically, if it's accessible, providing accessible facilities. And then I've just noted exterior facade improvements, which we can also discuss. So just a little bit about accessibility and universal design. Accessible design as a functional design element can be achieved through many compliance design approaches. At BBA, we offer an integrated design approach. So it's not just, you know, adding grab bars and push buttons to things, but really looking at the whole design and what works best for the facility. And in certain aspects, we've gone ahead, like within the washrooms and reorganized things. Almost get a better bang for your bucks, that it's not just putting an accessible stall in, but it's really reorganizing things so that it works more efficiently, functionally, and I like to use the term universal because accessibility, I think, has just been treated as, you know, a bare minimum of functionality and barrier free elements, whereas universal really talks more about inclusivity So through that integrated design process, we will deliver a functional and holistic universal design solution for the sports palace, enabling all residents, community members, and visitors, the ability to experience the facility with modern attributes. So I'm sure your community has seen this slide before, just with regards to making Ontario accessible and the number of people that will rely on accessibility as our population ages and continues to age in the current years and years ahead, which really makes it sense to make our community facilities more accessible and working with people inclusively with disabilities. So just, just some highlight approaches through accessibility and universal design. Barrier free path of travel, which is prescribed through the building code. So looking at those pathways and how one can navigate through a facility, making it easier for one to navigate through a facility as well. Approaches to certain doorways. So you know, it's always tougher to do this with an existing facility than a new facility. We really have to pay attention to the existing structural requirements as well as, you know, the current, how the space works as well. And sometimes it's not always the best way, but again, we try our best in what works through that integrated design approach. And then just some images below regards to accessible seating areas and how they're done in other large arenas or other facilities. A typical, what we call the platform lift idea, bringing you up to an open area. And then just some typical things about mountain heights and whatnot. So the next slide, again, just showing some images and sort of prescribed requirements of how we do the shower areas, what we've done in other projects, vanities, and washroom facilities. These are usually the most challenging areas, especially when we've actually been working on the dressing rooms for the past month and really trying to make that work because we do have a lot of confined requirements. We're not just confined by the room dimensions, which are challenging, but also there's a height, there's a height issue as well, which occurs above us from the bleacher tiered seating. So it's really working in all that as well as we still have to adhere to privacy requirements when going into the room. It is a change room. So it's a challenge nonetheless, but it's a, it's a challenge that we've adopted and look as an opportunity as well. So a bit about the design review and where we are in terms of progress and looking at these main areas. So this is currently where we are. We're about with the core part of the project, which is the rink slab, and I say core because it's probably the most cost involved in the project right now. We're at about 65% complete tender documents of that component. The other components come together a lot quicker. There's a lot less impeded impediments and details required, however, it is still part of the package, but we really wanted to focus on accomplishing the necessities first while we were going through design of those other elements and sort of approvals through the director. So this is showing some of the rink slab and showing the dashboards, how the penalty timekeeper's box is going to work with the players benches and whatnot within, and then all the refrigeration will come off of those headers at the blue line. And then just some of the details with respect to dashboard refrigeration benching that occurs within that rink slab replacement package. So then, these are just some zoom ins of how we're going to be treating the dressing room areas now. So starting with the Glenn's change room. As I spoke about where the cursor is, that's going to be the new rink access on the west when we cut the bleacher back. The dressing room entry will also be from that side. Barrier free accessibility throughout and accessible washroom with shower as well as additional showers and then additional water closet and lavatory used with a slider door as well. Then looking at dressing rooms or change rooms one to four. And, you know, we've gone through a series of variations through that. This, this was the preferred option that seemed to make sense and work, given the spatial requirements and what we want to refer to as accessible requirements as well. So both change rooms, you will come in. We've taken the doors actually off each dressing room, cut the walls back, provided stick racks here. There still is a large privacy component to the dressing room. The benching is located on the high side. And then the group washroom, which is shared currently through the two, will be shared again, however, with the large some things so that we've actually created, again, a barrier free water closet with roll-in shower and then the other showers on the opposite side with a sink lavatory area and then another water closet within the dressing rooms themselves. So again, I just note some of the highlights of what we're proposing in those change rooms. One item not to be overlooked was the referee room and also making that into an accessible change facility as well. So again, you see the roll-in shower with the transfer spaces, the accessible water closet and lavatory as well within the room. Outside the arena scope and, and looking at the main floor washrooms, what we're proposing here and obviously is all barrier free lavatory sink facilities, a barrier free stall, and then gang in the washroom stalls in a, in a really functional organization. We've created no doors on the washrooms and put in privacy walls. So you really have a free flow of traffic to make things a little more easier to use and accessible. And then in the men's, we grouped the urinals along the same side, the accessible lavatories as well as the accessible barrier free stall and the additional two water closets as well. So we, we pulled a partition out here so that you sort of get this free flow like some of the more modern facilities have within. The new universal washroom on the ground floor. I'm sure many of you have seen the universal washrooms. That's going to be located just to the, I believe it's the south of the group washrooms into the canteen area. So there is some local plumbing we can tap into so that we're not trenching and piping from farther areas, which will be, which will become to an advantage when we do some renovation to your typical universal washroom with all the push buttons, grab bars, barrier free sink, and water closet. So moving upstairs, we really wanted to take advantage and really look at that whole corridor because it really seemed as though forget my untechnical term, but a lot of mishmash going on and things and really trying to look at, you know, keeping maximizing the amount of fixtures that were there, but we really felt that, you know, reducing some of the fixtures in the building, we still have, we would still accomplish the intended occupant load of what the facility was seeing from our feedback with the director. So in doing so, we've really created washrooms in more of a standard approach, again, removing doors, barriers of whatnot, creating a free flowing access, but also keeping in mind the privacy. So coming off of that corridor, relocating the janitor to the end and access points with the, with the water closets gang one way and the sink areas gang the other way, really provides a more, more functional and fluid layout when you look at that entire design within that back corridor area. And then to note on the next slide, my cursor is, that's where we've incorporated the new universal washroom that was located in the existing storage room. Fortunately, the dimensioning, the dimensions work out within that space to provide all those modern amenities of what a universal washroom includes for. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the exterior, but just, you know, a sort of before and possible after. We haven't spent a ton of time looking at this, but possible exterior improvements because, you know, this is part of the budget as well, but the initial called for some replacement of metal cladding. What we're really thinking about is actually providing a proper coating surface on the existing cladding. The cladding's not failing, so to speak. It is metal. It does have a long lifespan left to it. So providing a coating to it in some more modern colors, maybe some staining of the existing architectural block and then providing possibly an EPAS exterior insulation to the non-insulated portions of the back area of the building to help accomplish some energy performance with those back areas on the outside of the arena, which will help prevent any further degradation of the existing envelope. Right now, it's just regularized CMU concrete masonry block. So it does need a proper envelope overseen. I know it's an arena, but it is heat loss and heat gain and things like moisture can get into places and really provide degradation on the existing building envelope. So just to summarize, we are finalizing our design scope of some of those items outside the rink slab as well as the possibility of looking at the exterior items and the front entrance way. It was sort of known as a nice to have, however, we feel that, you know, if you're doing all this work inside, it gives you the opportunities to do a little bit at the main entrance as well because, you know, this really will be transformed into a modern facility. So we're just taking our design scope right now, developing a Class C cost estimate budget that looks realistically. Unfortunately, as everybody probably knows, COVID does not help budgets right now. It's unfortunate to say that because the cost of a lot of things has gone up, you know, not the 10, 15%, but dramatically increased in some respects. So you know, hoping that things might normalize. I don't see it happening, but it really gets into your contingencies. Construction documents will be finished within the next month and a half, two months with respect to your funding timelines, and I think can speak a little bit to that. So then our tender permit schedule was pushed back a little bit from the initial. However, I believe the facility is currently still being used as a COVID-19 vaccination center. So construction, as was originally intended to start, I believe, early summer is not going to take place till approximately the fall. I'll let Ann handle that one again. And then, yeah, just speaking of the construction schedule started, working that schedule back so that we can really provide the best tender documents for this project because the better the documents are, usually the better the price is. Permitting that COVID didn't occur. So if, if there's any questions now, I could try to handle them. Otherwise, our team members, Jennifer Morton, who's a designer on the project from our office, as well as myself, the principal architect, and Doug McLaughlin, who's the principal structural engineer who's taking responsibility for a lot of the rink slab design components as well as the structural components of the project. Is there any questions, I guess, or comments that I can try to address?
I had two.
You're muted, Jamie. If you can just remove the screen so I can see everyone. Well, thank you, Nick, for your presentation, and it's pretty exciting to see a building that was built in 1976 and coming into the 2020s is, is pretty cool and going to be around for a while. So we're very happy that this project is moving forward. Counselor Noble, you had a couple of questions.
I just had two quick questions. Make sure I'm, I was checking out the slides properly. The upstairs bathroom and what would be the, the party area is that, I think that currently has eight toilets in there. Is that really just going down to three? And then the girl, the change rooms downstairs, it was one and then the Glenn's and then the other two. And is it only that two that has like no doors on the bathroom? I'm just, I've been gone a while from sports, but I just remembered that we overlapped a few times. So I just want to make sure there's never going to be a girls team and a guys team with no doors in between a bathroom.
So to answer that, the, the shared washrooms between the two change rooms have a door on, have a slider door on the other side. It's just not shown as a swing, and that's why it's hard to see in the graphic. So it will have the ability to lock from the other side.
Perfect.
Well, and with, once you're in those washrooms as well, they are still the full height washroom partitions that you would see in a typical washroom. It's not just open, open fixtures. If that, if that assists to answer your question. The upstairs, you are correct. We have reduced the number of fixtures. However, the way to evaluate the fixtures in the facility is through the building code is that you can evaluate the total fixtures in the building and that gives you a total occupant load. So we'll give it a full occupant load summary through to Ann, just to ensure that what we've come up with is still acceptable, but the numbers that we were discussing at which our revised design could accommodate still well accommodates your, your current capacity needs. You know, eight, eight of each, really, we're talking about over 1,000 people on that second floor. So that, that was sort of one of the, the criteria because we, we knew we had to reduce fixtures, but we, we wanted to make sure that we weren't reducing things too far because then it would really hamper your occupancy requirements.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on the, the doors along the south side of the building and the new door on the far end.
Yes.
Does that mean that the door that's in the middle currently will be removed?
No, actually, all the, all the entrances will still be maintained from the exterior and possibly upgraded to new either aluminum doors or new hollow metal doors. We're specifically more talking with the envelope itself than just some, some re-cladding on the lower level with possibly an insulated assembly on the exterior of the block. But no, all the entrances will be preserved.
It will stay where, okay. Thank you.
I'm excited to see the paint job on the outside. I mean, we always were avant garde with those colors, but good to see something happening out there. Any other questions from members of the council? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more about the outside of that building. That was, that was a big cheer when I read that. The, just a question about the existing aluminum siding that's there. You say that it's not past its, its life, and so it doesn't need to be replaced. However, is painting it going to, you know, will, will that paint, you know, peel in, in a few years? Or will you be able to, will it be able to be painted and it'll be able to last for many years?
So we, we've actually had some good success with, with some over coatings in the past about 15 years. You know, it's not your, it's not your standard trim clad on metal furniture that, you know, people are used to using the things of. The exterior coatings products have come a very long way. I would say in the last 10 years because, you know, in the past, I think you would just, you would look at something like this and just decide, you know, based on its color to replace it. Well, replacing that, replacing that prefinished metal cladding from, you know, like you said, the seventies has a large cost impact to it because when you get into replacement, then you might get into the substructure and replacing more than what you just thought you were replacing. So like I said, we've, we've done this in a couple of local arenas down here in the GTA. It has proven successful, I can say, at a minimum for 10 to 12 years because those were the ones I were the ones I was involved with. We haven't seen any paint peeling, anything like that, and it's actually a good opportunity, because, you know, it doesn't see, although you might think it sees a lot of direct weather, it doesn't get a lot of abuse being up at that high level. Doesn't get kicked, doesn't get dented, doesn't, all the things you see with metal at the lower levels, it doesn't get dissolved from the parking areas as well. So like I said, we've had some good success with some coating manufacturers. I can get back some data as we move along. Obviously, you know, the more expensive the coating, it's usually the better the warranty that comes with it and just the application methods. But it's something that, you know, we look at as a 20 to 25-year solution for that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, this is your chance, if you would like to pick the color yellow that you really like on buildings. No?
Canary yellow? I'm thinking maybe not canary yellow, no.
Okay, cool. Any other questions from members of council? Being none, well, thank you very much for your presentation, and we look forward to continued updates as we move forward through this pretty big project.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, everyone, and I appreciate your time today and look forward to progressing with your community of this project.
Great, thank you. Talk soon.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to staff reports, right into Community Services Department. Community Services May Work Plan, we have a motion.
That the Committee of the Whole receives report CS 2021-08, the departmental work plan update, May 2021, from the Community Services Department, for information purposes only.
Thank you, and welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a large part of my report has already been presented by BBA, so that will save me a little bit of time. I'd like to report back that we proceeded with the beautification of some of the items throughout North Glengarry. As you know, we had brought forward a project to install some flower boxes in Apple Hill, and also we are working with the Maxville Horticultural Society on maintaining those boxes, and the society has graciously offered a treat to the community to thank them for all of their support over the years. We have been continuing with the vaccination clinics here at the Glengarry Sports Palace. We are all booked through all the way into August as of now. And again, we'd like to remind the public that all appointments need to be taken directly with Eastern Ontario Health Unit or through the provincial call line for that purpose. The Health and Safety Committee meetings have still been going onwards. We've been targeting items that have been brought forward through the fire inspections that we've had with Chad, and we're happy to report that 95% of those have all been solved. We have a paddock bar that has been installed over in Maxville that responds to some of the needs under the fire code, and items like that that have all been targeted and resolved. We also had a great day with South Nation Conservation Authority back on May 7th, where they handed out over 800 seedlings to the township of North Glengarry's residents. As council will recall, you kindly contributed another $500 to that from the economic sponsorship budget, and that added to that total. So staffing, we were very successful in recruiting for the position of lead hand and equipment operator at the Glengarry Sports Palace. We've also brought back our seasonal employee for the summertime at the parks for the grass cutting. We've participated in the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee meetings, as well as the Community Development Committee meetings, and council is surprised at the going-ons of those committees through the minutes that are handed to council every month. We have some activities that are going to be moving forward in a different fashion this year. So we were successful in obtaining some money through Celebrate Canada to host some virtual performances for Canada Day. So we obtained $8,000 in funding, and what we've done is we've worked with different groups, and as you know, in the past, Lions Club used to handle Canada Day, but they decided to step away from this event this year, given the constrictions of COVID. And we've partnered with some musical organizations to offer some musical celebrations on July 1st, and we're also looking for an alternative to be able to offer some virtual fireworks. So these are things that are moving forward. We are expecting to hear back from the Eastern Ontario Health Unit on the timing to open the splash pad. So this is one of the things that hadn't been listed in the closed activities, but we know that the goal of the closure of the sports fields and all of the recreation activities was to ensure that there was no congregation of people, and opening the splash pad may cause exactly that situation. So we've been having some dealings with Eastern Ontario Health Unit to determine the timing. In the meantime, we've gone ahead and we've done all of the opening protocols for the splash pad. We're prepared, so tomorrow, they said that we could turn on the splash pad, we'd be able to do so. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring some good news on that front. Summer camp is moving along really well. We're again expecting to be at a full complement, and the Boys and Girls Club have asked us to reserve not only the Gary Shepherd sign for them, but also the Sandfield Center, because they want to be able to ensure the same type of protocols they did last year in the event that we have to go back into tighter restrictions. We have also forwarded an email to the Department of Fisheries and Oceans to indicate that we will be starting the removal of the weeds in Mill Pond, of the noxious weeds in Mill Pond, no later than June 15th. As council knows, we have to apply for a permit with DFO every year to be able to remove the weeds, and part of the conditions of that is that we have to notify them at least 10 days in advance of when we want to start the work. We've been accomplishing several items of work in all of the facilities, so we've been working on different complements at the Glengarry Sports Palace that we know that aren't going to be affected by construction, same as at Island Park. We've been moving forward with the oiling of the eggs at, for the geese eggs. And again, this is all conditional to the permit that is approved by the Ministry of Natural Resources. We have also gone forward with some of the items that needed to be done in Maxville, such as the painting of the Timekeeper's box, the penalties box, and the benches. We've had an issue with the sprinkler system at the Tim Horton's Dome. We've been getting an alarm, and usually happens between Friday and Saturday in the middle of the night, saying that the sprinkler issue is, has low pressure on it, and we dispatched staff to go check that exact item. So we've had Viking, who is in charge of the fire suppression unit that's there, come in and investigate, see what is wrong with the unit. They can't detect anything. We have an alarm system that is on this. Glengarry Security is the alarm company that is monitoring this. They're going to be investigating further to ensure that it's not a sensor and/or that it's something that's easily resolved. So we know it's not mechanical. We know that the sprinkler system is in good condition, that everything is functional. We just have to determine what the cause is of that alarm. And again, as I mentioned, it always happens in the middle of the night between a Friday and a Saturday. So interesting timing. In regards to other activities, we are steadily receiving inquiries regarding the community improvement plan and requests for listings on the municipal register, and those have been brought forward to council. We have had online meetings with different organizations, including the Ministry of Tourism, Sports and Culture. We attended a last group buying seminar for recreation facilities, and the timing was excellent, given everything that's happening with the Glengarry Sports Palace. In regards to economic activities, we've been pleased to be able to work with a lot of property owners that were delighted with the news that the building ban had been lifted by council, and we've been getting a lot of inquiries on that front. We've prepared several press releases of those, the Open for Business press release for the municipality, and we keep updating our social media regularly. So that is basically the gist of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and just a compliment, I drove through the park and saw all the planter boxes and all the garbage, all stained, which looked very good, and they look new. And also, I can't wait for the weeds to get cut, because they're already at the top with the warm weather we've had. So it, I know we're only starting in June, but it won't come soon enough. Questions, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to talk about Canada Day activities for a second. I see that a grant has been received for $8,000, and then another grant submitted to Canada Day 2021, both of which would focus on virtual activities. Now, I don't know, I don't know about you, but, you know, I think a lot of virtual activities, well, some of them have been overrated, and sometimes it's best not to try. And I would think that unless you had a really solid lineup of really terrific entertainment, it would be very difficult to put Canada Day activities in a virtual setting. I'm just wondering whether it would be possible to focus on something like, if fireworks could be done safely, where people were told to stay at home and watch them in the sky from your backyard, could we focus on fireworks in all of our various communities and do it safely?
So we've discussed Canada Day activities with several of the recreation committees that are in the hamlets, and it's again a challenge of ensuring that people don't congregate and people keep social distancing. So to say that we've explored exactly putting on fireworks with the hamlets, no, they haven't indicated any interest in doing so. For Mill Pond, there's a certain height that we can have the fireworks at. We can't throw the fireworks up at, I'll just say, like, 5,000 feet. We can't do that. There's a certain restriction. So the visibility of the fireworks is very limited to mostly the people that are around the pond. So I would say that that would be a less successful way of doing that. The format that we were proposing for the virtual concerts, they are solid acts. A lot of them are, you know, known acts to the community, and they were going to be videotaped ahead of time, presented during the afternoon for, I would say, a block of about four hours, and again, repeated at night. And these would be available on a platform such as YouTube, so they could be seen or used again in the future. So that was one way that we ensured that we were at least going to be honoring Canada Day with our community, so.
Okay, I should say, I recall leaving, when fireworks happened in the winter, when was that, Family Day?
It was actually after Santa Claus parade.
After Santa. Well, I remember, there was a, one year there was a delay for some reason, and I had to go. And I remember, I watched those fireworks in my rearview mirror down highway going west on Highway 43 for a long, long distance.
Were you not focusing on the highway, Deputy Mayor?
No, no, I was firmly focused on the fireworks in my rearview mirror. They were great. But anyway, that's why I bring it up, because I do wonder if maybe they can be seen better than we think, and, you know, it's always nicer to see something live. I'm tired, you know, I think we're all tired of the internet, but maybe I'm just speaking for myself.
We definitely appreciate that. What I could do, Mrs. Deputy Mayor, is I could definitely bring forward a report on the fireworks.
Okay, that would be great.
Well, I'm sorry.
Next, go ahead, Councilor Noble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, in, on part on karma, because, I mean, I love, love, love fireworks, and they're just, no matter how many I record and then watch again, they're just not the same. So I wondered if there was some way, not necessarily just that grant money, but if there was some way, because those things are expensive, of each hamlet putting on, not each hamlet, but a few hamlets putting on a couple different things, and then at least, like, no one's going to drive from Cornwall to come to Dul Keith, but maybe the Dul Keith through Glen Sanford, whatever, because I have watched the Hoxbury fireworks from just five minutes up my road, so I know that they go up quite high. So I don't know if a couple of the more centralized hamlets could have some and do a car thing, do a drive, maybe a drive-by, stationary cars, but do something where we can ensure the spacing. I mean, it is summertime, so it's not like it's February and we're going to be forcing people to be outside in the cold or whatever, but I'm just wondering if some more thought can be put into that, if there are a few individual hamlets where someone would take the responsibility, because as we know, whoever puts this on, it's going to be all on them.
And with the rec associations, well, certainly have in the past taken a lead on these kinds of things.
So just to mention, it's the municipality who actually coordinates all of the fireworks, because it falls under our purview with our insurance, and we do that with the fire department. But again, happy to bring that back as part of a report.
Perfect. Any further comments? Okay, thank you, Ann, and I believe we have a motion. All those in favor of accepting the recreation and culture report? Motion is carried. Councilor Madden, are you boycotting votes today?
Little distracted, my apologies.
Okay, I'm good. Moving on to Treasury Department, Departmental Work Plan Update. Motion.
That the Committee of the Whole receives report TR 2021-18, the departmental work plan update, May 2021, from the Treasury Department, for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly, welcome. You're muted.
No, we can't hear.
It's not muted.
Still can't hear you.
You sounded good tonight, Kim.
Okay, maybe while you're figuring that out, we will move on to the next report. Building Planning and Bylaw Department, Departmental Work Plan Update, May 2021. Motion.
That the Committee of the Whole receives report BP 2021-17, the departmental work plan update, May 2021, from the Building Planning and Bylaw Department, for information purposes only.
Thank you, and welcome, Jacob.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yours is working? That's too bad.
Yeah, I guess, I can fix that very quickly, Mr. Mayor. No, no, so more seriously, yeah, just a little walkthrough on my report here. So Maxwell Water Project, Angela has been very good at tracking down people that had no actions or no contact to date. So what she's doing is she's calling them, basically, and I would say most of, she got ahold of a few of them, and most of them are already connected, and it's just miscommunication between us and them. And so we do the inspection, we explain the backtrack, the fees and whatnot, so it's going well. We're coming along. We have 262 done at this point, so this is going very good. Building permits, so as you're all aware, the stay-at-home order complicates things a little bit. What we're doing, though, a little bit different than the first lockdown, I guess, we're doing like this the second time around, so we're issuing permits, the ones we can, the ones we're allowed to issue, the ones that are considered essential. And when it's, like, we mostly rely on the landowners to see if they can start the work or not, so it's less issues, I guess, for us here, no backlocking and no long periods of waiting time after the lockdown, so it's going well up to now. Office desk, no change there. Do you see that the last point on the building report there, it should be called something else than building permits, so really, it's just an update on, so council approved the new hiring of a deputy chief building official. The CEO and myself have worked on a posting and a job description, so I believe it's up on our Facebook and Twitter page already. It's going to be posted in the Glengarry News next week and the week after, I think. And it's also posted on, it's called the OBOA website, so Ontario Building Official Association, so all of the building officials across Ontario can basically see it now. So I'm also doing some private recruiting, I guess, so people I know, people I like to work with, so I'm just sending them the information. We'll see, the last date to apply is the 4th of June, so we'll see what we can, what we can get there. Bylaw enforcement, so Todd has been, I guess, busier when the weather is nice like that, people go more outside and they see more things, and there's more dogs, so we're getting some complaints, just normal. So we're we're getting some complaints, just normal complaints, grass, animals and whatnot. So Todd is trying to to go around and keep track of all of those. It's it's still going good at this point. Of course, the COVID stuff makes it a little little bit more complicated. Again, he's working with the OPP on some files. He's disinfecting the office here every every night and going around all the municipal offices, see if they need anything and whatnot. So he's doing a good job for that. Planning wise, the IHA project, so we did receive a report back from J.L. Richards, so it's like a review report on their site plan development proposal. So we have, we're going to sit down most likely early next week and go through all the points and see see what what we're going to enforce and what should be done and whatnot. I sent it also to them over there to review, so this is this is moving along also. Draft zoning by law, this is pretty much on hold for now. Planning procedures from the county, so we received an email from the new planner, Peter Young, yes, Peter Young, yeah, from the counties. And it's on his list of things to do, I believe, and he also updated us on the LPAD official appeal. So the next meeting date for that, I just pulled it right here, September 1st. So after summer, I guess, they want to to meet again. And there, before that, they're gonna, I guess, pinpoint on some of the of the hot subjects. So some townships have some some larger issues with the appeal here. Everything is going good, but I want to, I wanted to go to the list with the planner and see if all the owners were okay. We'll see what we can do for that, but we haven't received much feedback from landowners here. So it seems that it's it's going good for us for for the for the appeal. But we're going to review anyways. And the last point, so ongoing amendments, consent and minor variances, so this is going well. People applying for a lot of severances going on. It's only amendments, minor variance, so people are are active, I guess, in North Glengarry. So, yeah, that's, yeah, that's it for my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the report, Jacob. What is the timeline for the development charges by law? Do you have any idea at all yet, or is it too early?
Well, yeah, we, like, again, it's 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 on our radar for sure. We have to sit down with the with me and the CEO and see where we go. We had worked, we had worked on it a little bit, but then with staff issues here, I'm a little bit more unavailable, I guess, so it's on our radar. We don't have a fixed date at this time, but we haven't forgotten about it, though it's on our radar. And we know that it should be done also before, like, there, before, like, with the lagoon and stuff going on. So we're aware that we're keeping that in mind for sure, but no fixed date, no.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I if I may. We've we've issued the RFP, Deputy Mayor Williams, and it closes the end of the month. So we'll know better then, and then certainly we'll be discussing this with Jacob and also the other senior staff.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any further questions on Jacob's report? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. And going back to Kimberly, how are we doing with sound?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Can't see, but we can hear you.
There you go. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, you now get to hear me. So, sorry, you're going to read the motion, sorry.
We've already read the motion.
Okay. Okay, so we continue to work on policies. I have none to bring forward today, which is okay. The request for proposal for building assessments was awarded and to determine risk condition and lifecycle analysis of our buildings. When the lockdown ends, the assessment will begin. We're gonna, we're setting up a startup meeting as we speak. For also, sorry about that, we, I am working on the asset management plan, which is a very detailed plan. It's required by legislation by, it was July 2021, and they moved it to July 2022. It's a huge, very detailed document. The smallest one I've seen has been 78 pages, and the largest one I've seen was 210. So it's going to take some time. So I'm currently working on that. Currently, we had two properties for tax sales scheduled for May. The the deadline was May 20th, which of course did not work. Because due to the lockdown, you can't have a public tender opening. So that is now shifted to August for those two tax sale properties. Tax arrears in excess of two years have now been determined. Strong letters are indicating that payment needs to be, payment plans need to be arranged for those that are in two years in arrears. For those accounts who have not honored their previous payments or have ignored our requests, we're giving them final notices and moving forward with the registration process. Hopefully, this results in in good results, as our goal is not to sell people's properties. It's ultimately to have people pay their taxes. I've been looking at a five-year trend in our tax arrears, and it is going down steadily, which is a great trend that we're seeing. I do have to thank my tax collector for being diligent with that as well. In my report, it says the auditor is finishing up the financials. I have received the draft copy of the financials, and the auditor will be presenting them to council on June 14th. So that's upcoming. That's about all the Treasury Department has for now.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Any questions for the Treasury Department? Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one, Kim, once the, have they given you an indication, once they're allowed to get in for the buildings, how long they figure it's going to take?
Well, the the deadline is December for the assessments. Well, it's not only the assessments, it's the risk analysis, it's replacement value, stuff like that. They're hoping to have it done sooner, maybe October, November. But the further we delay access to the buildings, the further we delay the final product, so.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Questions? Seeing none, we had a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you for your patience. I don't know what happened to the sound.
Moving on to Public Works, we have a motion.
At the committee of the whole receives report PW 202112, the Departmental Work Plan Update, May 2021, from the Public Works Department for information purposes only.
Thanks, Sarah, and welcome, Tara. We are going to be extremely hard on your first report, so take it away.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, just provide a quick update. We have a regular road maintenance and resurfacing program underway and our spring maintenance for our water and waste system underway as well. So as per the report, the gravel program started this week and starting in Canyon area, and then our road maintenance, our regular road maintenance has been underway the last while, as long as well as ditching and brushing. Our roads need study, the consultants, as you probably already know from the last update, has been hired. There has previously been a meeting, and we are actually doing a workshop tomorrow with the foreman and the manager just to brainstorm a few things and get some more actual operations input on what the consultant has found. The weed spraying program that the county has initiated that we are part of is also going to be underway later this month, so the ad's gone out. And then Creek Bridge, this is probably one of our more exciting updates, the Creek Bridge construction. So there's a picture just last week, and so they'll be back on site next week, so May 25th to to work through that, and hopefully we'll have that bridge open sometime in June. And then we'll have demolition, the old bridge, after Department of Fish and Fisheries allows us to. So probably later in July, we'll be able to work on that or start on that sidewalks. So all the sidewalks have been cleaned to date, and then there's some sidewalk repair work that needs to be done on Sandfield Avenue. And and then we're going to work on our sidewalk inspections. So we've hired a consultant to work on our sidewalk inspections for us for this year to get us up to speed, so that'll start late May. Quick staffing update, so good news story, we have a new mechanic that started the day after I started. Be the new person for one day. And hopefully, you know, he's already got some good ideas, and I've included him in a session, a session we're doing next week. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes, and I look forward to working with him. Water and sewer, so Glen Robertson Distribution System faulty pump controller back in April, and the the health unit was notified, and we did have the pressure boil water. So that was lifted on April 30th. Alexandria wastewater, so the we've had sanitary sewer investigations underway, they're still underway now. We did find one collapsed pipe, so a picture of that, because it's not too often that you get to see the inside of a pipe. So it's a joint has collapsed, not exactly sure the reasoning. But either way, it's been repaired, so we did have a contractor in last week, just a day or two after we found it, repair that. And thank goodness, we had no sewer backup issues or any complaints from residents, so things were still flowing through that tiny little space that you can see in the image. Maxwell sewage, so we had the outcome of the camera work there was was five private sewer laterals that were found to have some infiltration happening right at the joint to our main. So staff's just exploring what our best option would be for rehabbing that before that. And then my numbers might be a little bit different than Jacob's numbers with regards to the Maxwell water and when we put the reports together. So the information I had available to me was that Angela said 254 services had been, connections have been inspected, and that she was working on the outstanding 78 services to complete. So, thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Wincin.
Nice to meet you, Tara. Welcome. Thank you for your report. I'm just wondering if you have any knowledge of where the speed signs are located within the municipality? Because I've had a couple of requests west of Dunvegan, that the hamlet was hoping at some point in time that the sign could be transferred there.
So through you, Mayor, you're referring to the actual, the the mobile radar speed signs?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where they are, right, all throughout the community, but we can always, we can put them in another location and collect some data.
Thank you.
Councilor Noble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, Tara and Sarah, are we going to be able to do a ribbon cutting for that bridge?
Yes, through you, Mayor, I, yeah, for sure. That would be a great thing, because that's a good news story.
Very exciting.
It is. So once I have the confirmed date on on when it can be open, we can definitely set something up with everybody masked up and social distancing and do that in a safe manner.
Perfect. Councilor Manley, did you have it? Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know, Tara, this probably doesn't apply to you because it's regarding the weed spraying program or whatever. And I know that am I correct in the fact that the counties has a a mapping system that you can go on and and mark where you don't want something sprayed? Is that correct?
I'm through you, Mayor, to Councilor Manley, I'm not positive on that. I would have to double check. So I can check into that for you to see if there's a map. I do know that people are allowed to or encouraged to put up signs saying the spray zone if they don't want their area sprayed. I will double check and see if that's an interactive GIS map or not.
I I believe it is. I believe it is an interactive, so, or or you simply submit something to the counties through the site.
I would, I would like to encourage our residents to to use that feature as opposed to putting up a zillion signs, like along Highway 43, which is be just becoming visual pollution is what it is. Where you've got, you know, 100 signs in the span of a, you know, a kilometer type of thing. I, to me, that's ridiculous. So maybe we can encourage our residents to to use the the virtual site or whatever and have it put on there as opposed to to putting up signs. That's just my my opinion on that.
I I I think what you're seeing, Councilor Manley, is there was an error done last year along that corridor. So I think everyone wants to make sure that doesn't happen again. So, you know, so I think that's pretty much the the crux behind that, so.
My thing, that was probably what was, okay, thank you.
Any other further questions or comments for Tara? Seeing none, there is a motion before you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to the Fire Department. Automatic aid township of Champlain renewal. We have a motion.
That the committee of the whole receives Fire Department report number FD 202106, and that the committee of the whole recommends to council that by law to enter into an automatic aid agreement with the township of Champlain be adopted.
Thank you, welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report is just to bring forward the renewal of the automatic aid agreement with Champlain Township. Just give give a little bit of background on it. So we've had this in place since May 2013. Automatic aid agreements are a common practice throughout the province of Ontario, and it's legislated through the Fire Protection Prevention Act. So this agreement has worked well over the years. We just want to update some of the language in place. Both Champlain and North Glengarry are are in agreement of the the new proposed languages that's been developed. And some of those points, at the point out, some of the changes were just in terms of to update some of the operational aspects, how we've changed over the years in terms of our operational requirements and just to to ensure that the delivery of service to the residents is is adequate and ensures that everybody's receiving the the proper service. So one of the important things is of the changes is that Champlain will be dispatched first. And now it's going to be indicating that dispatch first following Northern Gary will be dispatched immediately afterwards. So what this is going to provide is that the residents within this specific area, the agreement are still receiving the services provided by Northern Gary. And it is providing still that that break of ensuring that there is an immediate service with a closer fire service. However, Northern Gary will be taking on all responsibilities upon our arrival. Some other changes to note is just updated language to to kind of update both the operational of requirements of each individual fire department. Champlain had some changes to make, so that we just some changes in some insurance language, as well as a better map to represent the area that's being covered. In terms of the agreement, we've adopted to make this a indefinite period of time where both parties could be terminated within a certain period of time. But this this agreement will now be in place until if either party don't want to terminate the the set agreement. In terms of, there's been a change in some of the rate structures. This is just to align, there was, the previous agreement had two different fee structures. We've now moved to a single fee structure where it aligns with our normal procedures in terms of its MTO rates versus having a false alarm rate and so forth. So it's going to simplify things even for, and it's not going to be any financial implications or changes. This is all accounted for in the operating budget for this year. I'll share with you some of the maps. The new mapping system that we've gone with. Does everybody see that on the screen right now? Great. Some of the changes, we actually, the the wording was to describe the actual area a lot better. It's just, it was very simple. Now, you can see where the purple line is, that's that's what indicates the property lines. You're going to see that delineating line that that's just a result of data, digital that's being provided by our counties, and that's just representing the actual properties that associated to there. So the coverage area is actually Lagan Glen Elk Road all the way through to the, from Old Military right down through to the East Hoxbury border. One of the changes here in this area is Bennett Road, we've added this area in the fact of the location of it. Just the response would be that much more adequate for there, so we just add this this time. Previously, going north to Old Military Road, the language didn't specify lock and bar. So this was a lost area in this area right at the 34. So we included Highway 34 coming down and a lock bar. So those were some of the changes to to kind of improve on there and just to ensure that that the language specifies exactly that. One of the changes was also to the 417, this area is it is only Champlain is going to be dispatched to this area, given the fact of just the area. In terms of responses, mostly more vehicle accidents that that occurred in this area. However, there is an option there that should Champlain require Northland Gary's assistance. They just have to contact us and we'll respond as well. So their territory will end at mile marker 35 right through to East Hawksbury's area of the 417. That pretty much concludes the report in terms of where we're going with it. There's been a lot of good improvements moving forward with this, and I'm quite pleased with the agreement in place. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And now moving on to the fire departmental plan. We have a motion.
That the committee of the whole receives report FD 2021 07, the departmental work plan update, May 2021 from the fire department for information purposes only.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very quick update to the work plan. We continue with the major projects that are continually going on. Obviously, the pandemic is slowing some things down. The communication phase, some of the aspects are being struggled to. This is there was a fire back in in China that's caused a lot of issues in terms of receiving some radio equipment. So there's some challenges in moving forward with some of this. So there's just a little bit of delays in terms of our communication phase. Fire permits, we continue to see residents applying for permits. Where we're currently sitting at Agriculture 11, Brush 286 and Recreational 531. So that's pretty standard and it is improving in terms of and our complaints are very minimal in terms of of any action that's that's required. So it's been a very positive year so far. At this time, there is no burn ban in effect. However, the conditions are changing. Natural Resources is reporting this area is a very high level risk, which is which is getting close to a an area of potential concern for a fire ban. Hopefully, the conditions will change as we move through the week, but we'll keep monitoring those conditions and make the changes as required. Some staffing announcements. So on May 2nd, firefighter Kyle Marlowe made a decision to retire from the service after 10 years. So we want to thank thank you for his dedication and to the fire service and everything that he's he's put forward. And his family throughout his 10 years, he's really done a great job. And he's just decided to move on to other things at this time. So I want to thank him and hopefully we'll have the time to to celebrate his his retirement as COVID concludes. So another great news is we've promoted, we've gone through a promotional process for the vacant position of captain at Station One in Alexandria. Christicus was a successful candidate after a series of, we had great candidates throughout the pool. So however, Chris DeCuss was a successful candidate and I look forward to working with him and his leadership. And he's going to be course loaded on the appropriate courses as required. And so just a good news story for for Station One in Alexandria. In terms of COVID, we're currently awaiting provincial guidance from the Eastern Health Unit as well as the province on all our members receiving the second dose in terms of the phase approach. So I'm worried to hear any news on that. The new entry control system is just currently being installed through all our three stations, which is going to provide easier access as well as a controlled access of monitoring who could go in and out. This is going to be quite important, even especially through this pandemic where it's we can monitor who's been in at a a simple click of a couple of buttons. So that's good. Our personal protective equipment, we continue to provide this to the OFM. And at this time, I have no concerns of any shortages of TPU for any of our members. Training, again, made a decision to postpone the current training with certain essential requirements to ensure the safety of our members. This is a paramount aspect. But however, we've moved to an online format where they can still get some aspects through our target solutions, which has been very positively received by many of our members where they can, we can look at some theories. So as soon as we could get back to some in-person training, we'll be potentially increasing the amount of trainings moving forward for the remainder of the year so we could catch up on a lot of the practical aspects and ensure that we are compliant. Our new recruits will begin their NFP firefighter one course. This is a being done through a new learning contract with the Interior Fire College, where it's going to be a blended learning environment where they're going to be conducting some training at home and coming in and doing some skill sheets and physical aspect in health. So this, they should be concluded their new training course by December 1st, where they're tested by the province. And all the new recruits will be certified to the firefighter one level and then they'll move to the firefighter two level in 2022. Fire prevention, fire prevention, we've postponed any inspections unless for immediate threats to life or any considerations. But we've been moving towards the township building. So we're still moving at completing all those all those inspections. Automatic aid agreements and other bylaws we're going to be reviewing. I'll be bringing the report forward in terms of a new establishing a regulated fire department. Bylaw that'll be coming hopefully by next month as well as now conclusion on planes. We're going to be moving towards just to review the North Stormont agreement that we have to ensure that it's meeting all the requirements and has a proper language in place. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Any questions for the Chief, right? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Noble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question, Matt. I know we're not having a universal all-around burn ban right now. Just to remind myself and anybody else, the egg burn ban starts June 1st?
That's correct. So the I wouldn't call it a burn ban on on egg. It's just there's no permits that are issued for that period of time from June 1st to November 1st. And however, the recreation and brush can continue throughout this period of time.
Okay. And then just quick follow-up. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. You might, depending on the conditions, you might do what we did last year, what you did last year and just move it back a bit. So that they can burn it before November 1st.
That's correct. We can look at making those changes should the the conditions permit based on the certain factors and ensuring that we we still align with the current bylaw.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? None? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to other business, letter EOWC gig project final. Sarah?
Sorry, I didn't know you wanted me to speak to this.
Well, is there not a, is it just a, sorry, was that just in correspondence? It says other business. So who's speaking to it?
I think I just had these included. There is the meeting this evening, Mr. Mayor, for the Yorn presentation. So just sort of a reminder to council that's tonight at 6 o'clock and I did send some more information this afternoon on that. So. Unless there's any specific questions or comments, that's, it was just included for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Did did everyone, did all the councillors receive that Zoom link, the Zoom invitation? Yeah, okay. Make sure.
Okay, moving on to matters arising from the standing committees. Councilor Massey is not here for the first two updates. Councilor Noble, do you have an update for Glengarry Pioneer Museum?
I did, I did my notes. We had a meeting last week. The new students start in a couple of weeks. They're working on, working on opening hours because we had, they had to change it obviously with the second extension lockdown. And then how to be open. There's going to be a great virtual historical driving tour, thanks to Stuart Robertson and his crew, who did mention they really appreciate the help that both North and South Glengarry have given them. And it should be an interesting individual activity. Because I believe what you're going to do is you're going to pop a, pop a tape into your deck and drive around and they'll tell you what's what you're seeing as you're driving around. Then the museum also wanted to reiterate again how much they appreciate the grant. And that new system that I mentioned last month, it's an online system. It's going to be how you're going to buy tickets to the events. It's also up donations because as people get notices, they remember, oh, shoot, yeah, I forgot to renew my membership. And hey, while I'm at it, I'm going to throw in a donation. So that system is going to pay for itself really quickly. And so they also want to thank the community for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Councilor Noble? Seeing none, going on to Glengarry Archives update. We have not had a meeting since the last time. Arts, Culture and Heritage update by Councilman Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had three things in our last meeting, the new CIP application of 33 Main Street, South Maxville. We had a heritage listing in Maxville, 18 Catherine Street, and we looked at the review of the community grant program. All of those came to council. So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to County Council update, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, a couple of interesting items. One of them I've already met, actually, both of them, I think I mentioned before. The the commercial vehicle restriction by law was passed by county council on on Monday. So that means, and it was passed unanimously. So that means that there will be a ban on heavy truck traffic. There's a, there's a definition. It's it's all in the bylaw. Local, local truck traffic, of course, is allowed. But this ban will go from June the 1st to, I think it's November the 1st. And then and then trucks will, because the bypass can't allow for is only seasonal, so then trucks will be allowed throughout the rest of the time. But this is a bit of a trial period to see how it goes. And the counties has spoken to the OPP in a, in an effort to to be able to police this and asking the OPP to help them out on that. There's going to be some signage that's going to be going up informing truck traffic, truck drivers of this restriction. And there will be other communication that will go out as well. So this is, this has been a long time coming and the mayor and I were, you know, very, we've been very grateful to to Ben. That that he has really paid attention to the very serious nature of heavy truck traffic on the main street. And he has responded. So it's really good news.
Councilman, do you have a question?
No, just a comment that the OPP are looking for some help on that truck enforcement, whatever. I'm more than happy to help.
You, Constable, we appreciate your offer there.
I think I can recruit Councilor Madden as well to help. I won't, I won't have to stop the trucks by myself on Main Street.
I have some cameras that'll do some great work on that. Dates coincide with our fire bylaws. So if you see, you're not allowed to drive on Main Street and you see a truck on Main Street, you're not allowed to burn. So. Good reminder for everyone. Deputy Mayor, do you have any further comments?
Oh, Mike, Mike had a question there.
Quick one, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Karma, do you know signage-wise, was there any discussion about a sign about no engine brakes in town? And if not?
That didn't come up.
Okay, I'll send Ben a note. If we're putting up signage, I I honestly, I cannot get over the number of trucks that are using engine brakes in town. It's increasing drastically these days.
Okay. Okay, so there's that. And then there was a revised tapping agreement with the Howard Mitchell Forest. If you recall, that's the forest in Dalkeith. And they were going to be tapping somewhere around 300 trees. And I think they're actually, it looks like they've revised it because the company went in there and had a look at the trees that are there. They figure they can tap up to 600. So it's it'll generate a a small bit of revenue for the counties. But the beauty of it is, is that this forest will be productive and and provide an income also for for the business. So it's great news.
Okay, thank you. No questions or comments? Okay, moving on to Friends of the Trails update by Councilwoman.
So first of all, the the Trails Committee appreciates the grant from North Glengarry for $3,500. And they will be investing in some signage in at the, at the trail in at Alexandria Park. And the annual general meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June the 22nd at 6:30 PM. And there are open positions for anyone who's interested. They're reinstalling a storyboard before this weekend. There, it's a repeat of what they've had before, but just so that there will be something for the long weekend. And you'll notice repair work to the boardwalk and that's thanks to Heinz. Membership ships are available. So please, by all means, there's a five-year membership available that that you can access. And I believe there, we're also working on a limited number of memorial benches that will be placed along the trails where people can can sit and go rest. And that's it.
Winston, report. My apologies. No questions. We'll move on to community development. Deputy Mayor Williams.
So our community development officer, Daryl Cox, has has really hit the ground running and is working with all kinds of property owners of vacant properties throughout Maxville, Alexandria, even estate lots. He's identified vacant properties so that they're actually located on a map. He's talking to various different developers and he's putting together a package to mail out to all of the property owners who have vacant lots to give them an idea on what the process is and order to go about starting to develop those lots. I think he's also been talking to real estate agents as well because there will be a marketing piece to this that that it's a little bit after the development piece, but it's coming along. We also at the committee get regular updates on the education reform project that is being led by the counties as well as the Alexandria Lagoon project. We get updated on that. It's, you know, that's, that's a good news project as well. And we also get updates on the IHA project, which continues, continues moving forward. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. So that concludes, we will notice a motion is our next meeting is Wednesday, June 23rd. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that there be no more further business to discuss. The meeting was adjourned at 4:28 PM.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, members of council and members of staff for joining us today and also to people following us on Facebook. Thank you for joining us. Have a great rest of the week and a great long weekend. Thank you.